Okay, welcome. It's nine o'clock. We're going to call the meeting to order. I have a motion to approve the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, buddy, we read the minutes from the last week.
The first one I'll read is April one, the special meeting for property tax levy. Chairman Hockable called the special meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hockable. There were four citizens present in attendance and two citizens present via Zoom for the budget hearing. Also, there were seven employees present in attendance and two employees present via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to open the public hearing for the Wright County Property Tax Levy for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty five. Motion carries. Isaiah Larry discussed the levy rate staying the same, but the overall amount was increasing. He would like the board to try to lower the taxation of the people if they are able. Cluse mentioned he looks at the county budget the same as he does his own. The cost of doing business also affects the county as much as it does the taxpayers. With the House File seven eighteen, there will be mandated cuts in the future that may cut some of the business the county offers currently. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to close the public hearing. Motion carries. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additional questions on that?
I might change businesses, business to services.
Okay, I will. Yeah, well, I, yeah, okay.
That's in the.
I, I agree.
Okay. Okay, so scan approved as corrected and then our regular meeting, buddy.
April one, twenty twenty four. Chairman Hockable called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine thirty AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hockable. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. Held a canvas of votes for the special election to fill the vacancy for the City of Eagle Grove in Ward Two for council position. The special election was held on Tuesday, March twenty six, twenty twenty four. There were sixty-four votes for the election. Michael, what, what, Whelan?
Yes.
Whelan had thirty-nine votes and Paul James, our PJ, Lawson had twenty-five votes. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmussen to approve the canvas of votes for the special election to fill a vacancy for the City of Eagle Grove in Ward Two for council position. Motion carries on that one. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmussen to set the Wright County Budget Hearing for Fiscal Year twenty four, twenty five for April twenty second, twenty twenty four at nine fifteen AM. Motion carries. Jeremy Abis, Planning and Zoning Coordinator, presented ordinance number sixty-seven, an amendment to ordinance sixty-four, changing a parcel of land from ag to commercial industrial. This is for a parcel of land located in section twenty-one of Troy Township for a company called Talus Renewables, which is a green ammonia producer. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmussen to approve the second reading of ordinance number sixty-seven and set the third and final reading for April eight, twenty twenty four. By roll call vote, ayes, cluse, rasmussen, and hockable, nays, none. The second reading of ordinance number sixty-seven passes. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmussen to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen, a resolution to approve dispersment of funds for the American Rescue Plan Act. By roll call vote, ayes, cluse, rasmussen, and hockable, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see the full resolution in its entirety. Adam Clements, Wright County Engineer, presented the raise grant funding agreement. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the funding agreement for the raise grant for project number HDP dash CO ninety-nine parentheses one oh three dash six B dash ninety-nine. The Boss Pit Bridge on C seventy. Motion carries. This bridge project is estimated to cost two point seven five million with up to eighty percent at two point two million coming from the raise grant. The other twenty percent will come from the farm-to-market dollars. Clements gave an update on secondary roads. There were two service workers completed last week. Late operators are submitting their spot rock locations through a program using GPS coordinates rather than the flag system. Crews have been working on the granular engineer miles with seventeen of fifty-seven segments completed. Trucks went out to a weather response on March twenty fourth at nine thirty AM and were finished around two PM. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections on those?
Just the addition of the.
Motion.
It's down approved as read of that correction. Open forum for the public. Anybody here who has progressed the board, you're here on Zoom.
Can I get some signatures? This was part of payroll. I didn't get it to Joan soon enough. There was a discrepancy in last week's payroll, so I had to void out and replace payroll and run a new cycle for her.
Okay. We need to call you down here for the next one.
Yes.
Sign that and I'll send her down.
There you go.
Thank you.
If someone come down, we'll jump to number seven. Receive monthly Wright County Sheriff's Revenue Report. County car service season miles, two thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. County new and renewed weapons permits of two hundred dollars, cap fee fees of a hundred and ten for a total of two thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents.
Motion to approve.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Courtney, perfect timing. Back to item six, review and take action on joint, right, district one hundred dash two, pass it at number four.
You should have had a copy of this in your basket. We do not assign this because we are not the control. Franklin County will sign this. This is pay estimate number four for the project that's going on up there. That's pretty much all or all is in Franklin County. The amount of this pay estimate is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents. There is no updates from Lee on that and we're waiting to hear back from Lee on the estimated completion date for this project.
Okay, this was the open ditch out into the Iowa River.
Yep.
Motion to approve construction pay estimate number four in the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents.
For a second.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Courtney. Received quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Recorder. I'm going to read all these numbers. You want to go ahead and just give us the synopsis to me?
Yeah, revenue was down. High interest rates and such have finally hit Wright County, so our recordings have been way down this last quarter.
Mortgages and transfers or?
Yeah, yeah, all recordings in general. Hopefully they'll turn around, summer coming.
Other than that, all going well.
Motion to approve.
For a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Receive quarterly update from the correct camp or the right kind of auditor. Okay. Copies, three dollars, flat books, a hundred and fifty, no fireworks permit and voter registration list, twenty dollars.
Booming business.
Yes.
Most to, most to receive quarterly revenue report from Wright County Auditor.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion or opposed, motion carries. Right County Pressure, two items. Take action on the property taxes uncollectible and an assignment of a county held tax.
Same property.
Okay.
Um, just going to go on to a little housekeeping. The last time taxes were paid on this parcel of here in Clarion was the eight, nine tax year, two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Oh, wow.
And that was by the man's mortgage holder at the time. And then he left the area. We had a forwarding address to Oklahoma. He got in touch with us several times that he no longer owned the property. But the mortgage company didn't want it either, so they let it go as well. We offered it at tax sale, no one bought it. And then we offered it the second time at public better and no one bought it. So it's been sitting since then.
And so what, what do, if nobody bought it before, what is our?
So what we can do is under Iowa Code four forty-five sixteen, I can deem it impractical to collect, to continue collection on it. So what we would do is just simply zero out these taxes, which most of it is owed to the City of Clarion. So I did, because they have a special assessment on it that, well, of the nine thousand dollars that are owed on this empty lot, most of it is the city special. And then taxes that kind of means though. So I did contact City Hall Clarion and they did express interest. They checked if they're returning, they would like to take the tax sale certificate as well.
Okay, so they're going to pay us the nine thousand dollars?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars?
No, that's what I'm going to do is deem it in, in.
You're going to zero it out and then transfer to them?
And then transfer the tax sales certificate to them.
Okay.
Because as a city, they can refuse to pay it anyway. We will disobey them anyway for code. So I think this is cleaner.
There is no reason to offer it again. When was the last time it was offered?
So we offered it in, they didn't pay oh eight, oh nine. We offered it in nine and then we would have offered it in twenty-ten as well.
So, I mean, that's been thirteen years, should we?
I can't do it again.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Oh.
The tax sale, you get two shots, you get first year and second, and that's it. And then it sits on a county hill.
Okay, okay. Now the city, at least the city will have it and they're going to deem what they, yeah. Where is it at, Clarion?
Uh, it's on Highway three, empty lot on Highway three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think I know which one that is. Okay, do I have a motion?
So we are abate?
We're going to abate the taxes first.
Okay.
And then the second motion will be to assign, assign this tax sales certificate to county hill.
And we're going to assign that to the city?
Okay, and the city can take it and liquidate it or do whatever they?
Finish up, they do the ninety day notices and they finish up.
Okay.
At least they can get a little bit, a little bit of dollars out of it at the end.
I hope so.
But we get nothing.
Well, most of it's the cities anyway. I just, I mean, of the nine thousand dollars, most of it is their city specials plus the interest on that, plus their city taxes and the interest and penalties on that.
Motion to update the taxes on, do you have a property number?
Six fifteen Central Avenue East.
On six fifteen Central Avenue East.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. And item B, take assigned county held tax certificate.
So that would be tax sale certificate, twenty eleven dash eleven, five hundred.
Okay, and that would be to the city of Clarion? Okay.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax sale certificate to the city of Clarion.
So, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries.
Perfect.
That's it for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Amanda Meyer, Finance Manager, present budget amendment documents for FY twenty twenty four.
So I give you a couple sheets.
Mm-hmm.
Give you a spreadsheet with the revenues that we have came in from the departments. That is going to increase five hundred eighty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Then I give you the expenses also. And the expenses are also increasing one hundred and forty-six thousand two sixty-seven.
So we have a net of about four hundred thousand dollars.
Three six.
Said in the other way. Any other questions for Amanda?
Did you want to meet with any of the department heads with the amendments? Or are you okay with?
I think, I mean, nothing's really out of the ordinary, I don't think.
No.
Okay.
So then if we send it to the newspapers this week and have it published on the eighteenth, you can have a public hearing for April twenty ninth.
Okay.
Motion to approve the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Glad to.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
Motion to set the public hearing for the proposed budget amendment for April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. You have to set a time.
I think we did nine fifteen.
At nine fifteen.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Amanda. Jeremy Abis, Planning and Zoning Coordinator, hold third reading of ordinance sixty-seven.
He's not going to be here today.
Okay.
He's, they're out driving Piling.
All right. No, no. So be the third one of changing it for the, the green ammonia plant?
Correct. So I make a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number sixty-seven and an amendment to ordinance number sixty-four, which is the zoning ordinance for the unincorporated portion of Wright County, Iowa, to provide for a change in zoning from real property, of real property from agricultural to commercial industrial. And again, that's the six point six acres for Talus, right? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Believe so.
Talus Renewal.
Talus Renewal.
Talus Renewal.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean, how do you vote? Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Good, that one's all scored away. Appreciate it.
I'll tell Jeremy he has to, once it's published, then I'll go.
Perfect, thank you. We're going to item fourteen. Adam, we got some time, we'll kind of flow through.
Yeah. So first item is the secondary roads budget, same as presented to you when we did our budget session. Next year, we'll be getting about, we'll have about eight hundred and fifty-two thousand with, this includes the carryovers or the amendments. Eight hundred fifty-two thousand carryover, two point five million from property taxes. Three point five, about three point nine million from road use tax in time twenty-one. I'm on the first page, so, or the, after the signature page. We do have bridge replacement funds coming in at eight hundred and fifty. Our bridges expected to cost eight hundred and fifty, so that's a swap. That's just a net zero on that item. And then miscellaneous receipts and permits. And then also the reimbursement from planning and zoning. Total miscellaneous receipts about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Total receipts next year about eight point two million. And then on to the next page. So essentially the expenses, like we discussed, the construction eight hundred sixty-five, that also includes fifteen thousand dollars for any right of way that we need to buy from landowners, which we normally buy just temporary easement or a small portion of easement around a bridge if we have to do that. Roads, bridges, new equipment, item is up quite substantially because the costs of the new equipment have risen quite a bit. Eight hundred twenty-nine thousand for equipment, that's a motor grader, a truck, and then the dirt patcher. So, total, total expense, seven point nine million. And then with a carryover of two sixty-one next year. So that's a little lower than I'd like to see it, but I have a feeling we should be able to not spend the entire one hundred percent this year.
Worst case scenario is?
This is worst case scenario.
Yep. Okay.
Just need a motion to prove that.
All moved. Second. Any further discussion on that? Obviously, and this one too. Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We sign that one?
Yep.
And I'll get all the dates in there.
Okay.
Okay, next item is the program. So the big, this is color coded as per the programs years.
Okay.
So I'll try to, if you go into the five-year program, this, I also tried to color code this item. I've never given you this before, but this is our expenses. And then of each, of each project and on the right, or yes, right side, is our balances in our FM account and VR account. And then just to show you where we're going to be after five years in both of those accounts and what we're doing.
Okay.
So up at the top, it starts, is the beginning fund balances.
What is the FA?
FA is federal aid. So we go into year one. If you want to go off of this, this would probably be easier because it's green. And I tried, like I said, I tried to color code it with this map. Year one, we have Bridge one fifty-seven, which is up by Belmont. It's in the green, south of Belmont.
Charles Woods?
Yep, Charlie.
Okay.
We estimate that to be eight hundred fifty, that is the, that eight hundred fifty federal aid coming back to us. We spent it zero.
That's a wash.
That'll be a bridge that.
That'll be a bridge.
Culvert?
Nope.
Or double?
Nope. No, it'll be eighty to a hundred thousand just for mitigation. That won't go towards construction. That'll be a bridge. Yes. We would have to put, I think we were thinking either double or triple pipe in there. We're going to.
Does that be cheaper in the long run?
No. About the same.
Okay.
R thirty-three, C fifty-four, that is our STP project for next year. So that is from Highway sixty-nine west on CB four and then up Hancock, R thirty-three to Highway three. So fifteen miles of paving, zero dollars coming from local. It is all FM and federal aid, so regional money for the federal aid, two point six one million, around there. Bridge two ten, we discussed last week, we just signed the federal aid agreement, five hundred fifty from FM and two point two million from FA, federal aid. And then Bridge one sixteen, which is north of Rowan on Victor. That is all, also going to be all federal aid, five hundred thousand. And because that is on system, you see the five F next to the name. It actually doesn't come out of secondary roads, it just comes out of her checkbook for the BR down at the state. Or the DOT.
So these projects don't really have any local dollars?
Zero local dollars in this next year.
Wonderful.
North of Rowan, is that a crick or a drainage?
It's a, I think it's crick, actually. Yeah, because it's, it's going through where Anime Avery, it hooks to Avery's house down on that corner. So that'll be, we're going to try to put a culvert in and try to stay underneath the mitigation size. So we're going to, should be a double box going in there.
Okay.
It's close, it's very close. I think we might be able to get around it, but we'll see. Twenty twenty-six, we have, we have Bridge one seventy-five, which is on the four corner up on R thirty-three in Norway Township. You see it's in blue, nine hundred thousand for that one. That will be a nine hundred thousand in and out. We'll have to spend it out of our budget, but we'll get federal aid dollars for it coming back, reimbursement. So these are all costs. C twenty-five and R forty-five around the lake. So from R thirty, thirty-eight east, essentially to Highway sixty-nine and then on the west side of the lake, back to R forty-five. We're doing that. Take note that that east and west portion off of R forty-five, we're going to add shoulders to it, so it'll continue the walking area.
Okay.
The, the paved shoulder area. And then also from R thirty-eight to O'Brien Avenue to the west side of the lake, from County K, we will add paved shoulders. Because this is also a share of the road when we do R thirty-eight too.
So, and that's part of the trails.
Yep.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Trying to assist with that.
Yep.
So that project would be two point two five million coming out of farm-to-market, no local dollars.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-seven, R thirty-eight, CB four to south of Clarion. I moved this one up from twenty-eight to twenty-seven because the city is doing it at the same time with their STP dollars. So we'll connect into their project. We won't do it concurrently or under the same contract, but it'll be booking into the south end of Clarion.
But, but we would have the same contractor?
No.
No? We're going to do half of the road?
No, we'll just do it, we're doing it at the same time. Actually, I think they're doing all concrete and they have all, we're doing asphalt.
We're just coming into the city limits.
Yep.
But I thought that we own from the city limits to?
Pay for half of what they're doing in there.
Okay, all right.
But they'll have their contract, it will be half.
Yep.
And will that widen that, like, the north side of Highway three where the curb and gutter is there and all that?
I don't know their plan. It's mainly, that section is probably going to be a rural section with no curb, I'm guessing. Because there is farm on the west.
Right.
So, but I can double check with that.
Because there's no curb and gutter.
There's no curb and gutter currently.
But on the, on the east side of that, when they did the hospital, I think that they put in probably sure and.
Yeah, I don't know if the east side, if the east side on the hospital parking lot, maybe north of it where the.
Meadows.
Meadows is.
Yeah, okay.
Have to look at it.
Right.
So, whatever way, we'll hook into it, but we're going to do, on this project, we're going to do, we're going to crack and seat the concrete. So we're going to have somebody come in and pound it and break it up, use it more of a base. And then, because it's about eleven, eight to eleven inches of concrete in there, it's a white top on like, or concrete on concrete. And then we're going to put about probably two to three inches of granular class A roadstone on there. So it'll be moisture control and then we'll come in with four to five inches.
So it's going to be removed, it's just?
No, it's just going to stay in place. Everything's going to stay in place.
Be broke up.
Broke up.
Broke up, we'll put, so that gravel or that limestone that we're going to put on there is a bond breaker. So we hope for no cracking to go up.
Gotcha.
So essentially making a McAdams cell base with a chokestone and then putting four to five inches on top of that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And that always seems like it's kind of like County K, it always cracks, like they made it a little bit wider or something at some point.
Yep.
That should eliminate that.
With doing the crack and seat.
Okay.
Yeah, the revolution, a modified revolution. Bridge one fifty-five A is north of Belmont, just off of Highway sixty-nine. That will be a bridge, nine hundred fifty thousand for that bridge. That's quite a big bridge.
Is it going to the, up to the museum?
He, no, no, it's the one in north.
North of there, yeah.
Yeah, north of there. Yeah, mile and a half north.
Okay.
So nine hundred fifty FA, that will be in and out again because of the AJ on the, the account. So if you see that AJ, it's a in and out of our budget. Twenty twenty-eight, we do have one local job in, just in that, I've kind of given the time to maybe get some money back in our accounts on FA and farm-to-market. Because you can see in a farm-to-market, we're two point eight, two point eight years in the hole and then point six three years ahead in VR. But we have a big bridge coming up in twenty-nine, we're going to try to.
Is that the other Woolstock Bridge or?
No, 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 no. That was next year, two, Bridge two ten.
Okay.
This bridge, so one sixty-five, it's a bridge up in Norway Township, almost on the counter line.
Okay.
That'd be a culvert.
That'll be a culvert, a single box, so we won't have to worry about any mitigation.
And that's local dollars on that one?
That is all.
All local.
All local. Bridge one seventy-three is also a local project that we are throwing in there. That is north in Norway Township, off of one hundred and thirtieth Street. You can see that. That will also probably be a double box over.
You begin by done with, get through all this with most of your bridges.
Are a lot of these bridges embargoed now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
It never ends.
That was one of Gold Bell, easy to do, yeah.
Most of the time, we try to put in culverts just because of the simple fact of, that there's no real maintenance to them. And they're going to last probably seventy-five to a hundred years. So, so then Bridge one twenty-four, this is, this bridge is on the Lake Blacktop, just west of Highway sixty-nine, about a mile and a quarter. It goes over the Iowa River.
That's a big one.
That's the big one. So two point, we're expecting about two point one million on that bridge. So that's why I had to have a little break in spending. So that's why I had to have a little break in spending F, federal aid dollars. And so we'll go on the whole by two point one five years on that one. So that next year in FY thirty, we'll probably look at not doing any federal aid.
Right, just build, build, get it back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
How far can you go on the whole of those?
Four and a half years. It's up at the top. So you look where it says BR swap account balance to the, to the right of that.
Yep.
Says years plus four to negative four.
Okay.
And then the other one for FM is plus three, negative five.
Gotcha. So you use the savings account and then?
Yeah, yep, yep, and build it back up. And then we have R twenty-seven paving from Woolstock to Eagle Grove. Two point four million expected for that. That is kind of, depending on the rules of FM, that five years out, it's, it's tough to say, hey, are they gonna change the rules to make it negative four, negative three as people are spending money? So that one might get swapped, moved down, moved in, moved up. We just don't know.
Okay.
So I do have planned FY thirty, I'm gonna apply for an STP project for R thirty-eight north. So kinda.
Is the STP the one we pool with other counties and then we use it?
Yeah, where we get it, yeah. Yep, it's out of the region.
Okay.
So all in all, eight point four of FM, nine million of federal aid, four hundred and twenty of swap, which is essentially federal aid. They just had us do specific for one of the bridges. If it's on system, you have to eighty-twenty for that. And then only seven hundred and fifty thousand from local dollars.
Wow, a lot of projects, not a lot of.
Projects, not a lot of local dollars.
Nice job.
So with, with seven eighteen, some of these dollars
affect this.
Doesn't affect this in any way.
The only ones it would affect would be in twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Because those are local dollars. Seven eighteen is, it just depends on, it's really affecting what you can do for letting. So, and what you give secondary roads.
And you're required to do a five-year plan every year and update.
Yeah, but there was also a requirement that, that there was a seventy-five percent.
So that has always been a seventy-five percent minimum local effort walk, okay? So if you don't give me, if you don't give me seventy-five percent, you can't let an FM project down to DOT. And you get dollar for dollar taken away from your road use tax.
But you don't foresee seven eighteen making that come to fruition?
Some counties have issues.
Some counties have issues right now because they were at the minimum. You have always been close to ninety-five to a hundred percent, mainly probably around the hundred percent.
Right.
Okay, so you don't, I don't think we'll have a problem.
Okay.
Just depends on what you can levy.
Did they fix that at all?
I had no idea, yeah. Yeah.
What a crippled county.
There's eleven counties that will be, that will not, I mean, if they don't do anything with it, that will not let an FM dot FM account project at the DOT and will get money taken away.
Wow.
What a wrench that would throw.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm gonna be meeting with Shannon Latham, probably in May sometime after they get done with session and everything to talk about hospital seven eighteen. So I've been trying to take as many notes as I can on it. Probably should meet with you and see on those counties that with secondary roads, you know, what is it, what can, what can the state do to, to fix?
Right, because they hate changing legislation when it first passed, but some things need to be tweaked a little bit.
It's broken.
Yeah.
The problem like you have like in Woodbury County is, is that they have such, they, they have such a low rural tax rate, but they get a lot from, I think, law stats. Which doesn't, does help, but they just still don't get enough. So, and that's a big county.
Okay. Nice job in planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion for that one.
The Fager plan?
Don't move.
Any further discussion? On the paper, say hi. I'll let you go and do the secondary roads and then we'll be right with you.
Quick update, guys are outblading, inputting their spot rocks. We start hauling spot rocks when we can and then also not one twenty-nine. Muscle fat fingered that segments. It's only twenty-nine out of fifty-seven engineer miles segments have been completed and sixteen workers were done.
No, at least you're getting some rain to get some grading down.
Yeah, 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 we can.
Thank you. Okay. Act number thirteen-nine, February Elizabeth. Gardner and Company to give us a overview of FY twenty twenty-three White County audit.
Morning.
Everybody have their audit books? Why didn't you give it?
I have mine.
And you have letters for me too?
Yes.
It is, but you know, a lot of it is pretty uneventful year, so.
We like that.
Yeah, not a lot of findings, not a lot of, you know, not a lot of problems, but not a lot of government accounting standards board statement changes. Now I had one of those and you guys didn't have anything that met the requirements. So didn't have to do anything with that. You spent a lot of federal dollars, but not enough to require any additional procedures.
What is that for? Is it six hundred?
It's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yeah, in a fiscal year.
That's like ERP. She helps me.
So if you go over that, there's just more forms to fill out or?
Oh, yeah, it's a whole nother audit. If you go, if you spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal money during a fiscal year, it triggers what's called a single audit. Which means we have to do additional test work and additional reporting to the federal audit clearinghouse, which
We did last year.
So how does that?
Last year.
How does that work for secondary roads then?
There was a, there's a loophole with the ARCA money. If you go over that limit because of your ARCA expenditures and you're a small local government like this, they let you do an alternative compliance engagement, which is less in scope than a single audit. So then you have to do the compliance requirements for that and report on that. That's what we had to do last year. But this year, you know, we were just under that mark, so we didn't have to do anything. Yeah, which is really nice because there's a lot of smaller, you know, governments that will hit that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's all because of ARCA. Everything else is minimal. And so then they let you just test the ARCA expenditures and to make sure you're compliant with all the requirements for that. But yeah, if you have to have a single audit, it's another week's worth of work for us.
Oh, it gets expensive then.
Yeah, yeah. And then you have to do additional reporting with the federal audit clearinghouse, which that is. Yes, yes, which.
Well, this year because of the bridge, will we?
We didn't go over her last fiscal week after over seven.
Okay, we've got our book, so.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and we'll hit the highlights and then I guess you can, you know, stop and ask questions along the way if you have any. We'll start on page two, which is independent auditors reported on Gardner and Company letterhead. And this report just goes ahead and outlines that the purpose of an audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The purpose of an audit has nothing to do with finding fraud, if any errors or irregularities. The audit is designed to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The audit is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county during the fiscal year. And then this report just goes ahead and provides our opinion. And for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-three, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is what you want to hear, means it's a clean opinion and we believe the financial statements are good presenting. We go ahead and we talk about emphasis of matter. There was one Gatsby statement that was implemented for this fiscal year. But again, White County did not have any agreements that met the reporting threshold, so there wasn't any additional reporting for that. This report also outlines that the responsibility for the financial site statements lies with management. It's management's responsibility to ensure that they're finding, that they are fairly presenting. This report also goes through what our responsibility is as the auditor of those financial statements. So it just kind of has some bullet points about how we have to go ahead and, and exercise professional judgment, professional skepticism. You know, something that was new for last year is we have to look at any fund balance and determine whether or not there's a going concern with whether or not White County is going to be in business for the next twelve years. So additional procedures for that. Also additional things that we have to look at as far as maintaining our independence and being the auditor of the financial statement. So, you know, our independence has, the, the things that we could help with has really narrowed up in the last few years with the implementation of our new rules. So it used to be that he could call with a question and I could say, oh yeah, do it this way. And now, you know, not so much because then I'm auditing my own work. So what we can and can't help with has really narrowed up in the last last few years. So again, that goes ahead and talks about that. If we get to page six then, management discussion and analysis. And this, the following pages just go ahead and give some financial highlights. It talks about how to use this annual report. And again, White County will present three sets of financial statements. You'll have a full accrual set, which includes all your capital assets and long-term liabilities. You'll have a modified set of financial statements that shows the sixty day accrual window. It also mirrors the GAAP report that is required to be submitted to the Department of Management. And then we also present cash basis since the county actually budgets on a cash basis. So we'll have a budget to actual comparison as well. So the management's discussion analysis just goes ahead and explains that. It also offers some comparative information on pages nine and ten, so you can compare fiscal twenty-two to fiscal twenty-three. It also gives the county a chance to talk about budgetary highlights during the year. And it also gives the county a chance to talk about economic factors and what they were considering when adopting the fiscal twenty-four budget. So then the actual financial statements start on page fourteen. And we do start out with the full accrual financial statement. So exhibit A and exhibit B are the full accrual. They include the capital assets and the long-term liabilities and most similar to what you would see in the private sector. So your statement of net position is your balance sheet. And again, Wright County does present governmental activities and also the business type activities. And then on exhibit B, we're presenting a statement of activities, which is like the income statement. And overall, for this fiscal year, the county did see an increase in net position of about three point eight million dollars in total. So three point nine of that was for the governmental activities and then the business type activities did see a loss of a hundred and four thousand. So then we get to the modified accrual financial statements and that would be represented on exhibit C and exhibit E. We present several funds as major, including the general rule services, secondary roads, debt servicing, capital projects. And then the rest of the county funds are aggregated and presented in that non-major column. But they are presented in their own right on schedules to agree that are towards the back of the book. You can kind of see the detail for those non-major funds as well. But again, exhibit C and E mirror what was reported to the Department of Management on your GAAP report and represents the sixty day accrual period for receivables and payables. So with that, then we have exhibit D and F, which those are the reconciliations on how you get from the modified accrual basis of accounting to the full accrual. So that way you can step through and see what the changes are to get from one basis of accounting to the other. And then on exhibit GH nine, we have your statement of net position for your proprietary funds. And we do present for the enterprise agribusiness part and then also your health insurance. And again, we have a statement of net position, a statement of changes and a cash flow. With the health insurance, you know, that's always something that counties want to talk about. Health insurance is very difficult to budget for and has been very volatile. You don't have a lot of control over what you have for medical claims paid and the premiums have kind of gone all over the place. So this fiscal year, we did see a net income of about seventy thousand. So, you know, we're taking every dollar that we can get. So that's a positive thing there. And then exhibit J, exhibit K, these are the statements of fiduciary net position and changes in fiduciary net position for your custodial funds. And those are the funds for which the county is a fiscal agent. So your schools, your townships, your Assessor nine-one-one emergency management, that type of fund. So, and again, the detail for those funds is presented in schedules three and four in the back of this audit book. But this goes ahead and shows your balance sheet then and also your statement of changes for those for this fiscal year. Then starting on page thirty-one, we have the notes to financial statements. Unless somebody has a specific question on one of them, we're gonna skip through them. This just goes ahead and gives a lot of accounting terminology definitions, amortization schedules for your debt. There are several pages of required information from your actuary for the pension, the pension plan. They provide us about five pages that goes in there. Also with your other post implement benefits, more actual information on how they arrived at those numbers for this year. There's also information about your capital assets, your health insurance, your property insurance and that type of thing. There's also a version there about the accounting change, but again, you didn't have any arrangements that met the recording requirements. So we weren't required to restate or do anything of that. So the next page I'd like to stop then is on page sixty-four. And this is the budgetary comparison schedule. This presents the county's budget in the original form and then also the final amended budget. And then it shows the cash basis receipts and dispersment for your governmental funds, so that you can go ahead and have that budget to actual comparison. The column that's titled less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage, because that's not required to be included in your budget document. So we go ahead and pull that out of there when we're doing our budgetary comparison. And then we get our financial net variance. Not, none of those variances were significant enough to, you know, cause a red flag and the, the larger variances were explained. Projects don't go as into you don't buy that piece of equipment, you know, that car that you ordered didn't show up because of the supply chain issues. So none of those, you know, posed any red flags from an audit standpoint. Some more additional required supplementary information and explanation about the budget process. There's also several pages of required supplementary information for the IFRS disclosures, what your proportionate share has been. You know, what your contributions have been for the last ten years, some more actuarial information on, on that. And that gets us into our supporting documentation, which is starts on page seventy-four. And this is a non-major governmental fund. Their details for their balance sheet on schedule one and then schedule two is the non-major governmental funds, their statement of changes. And then three and four are those custodial funds, giving them detail about that. Schedule five, that is a ten-year comparison of revenue resource and expenditures by question, just for some additional analytical. And then this is the page eighty-four, which is our Gardner and Company letterhead. And it's our independent auditors report on internal control of the financial reporting and compliance. And in addition to oppining on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we also do some code of compliance test work and some internal control work. So again, it's based on tests and samples and the findings are based on our audit test work. So, you know, there could have been a transaction that would impact the findings, but if we didn't test that transaction, we're not gonna have So this letter just goes ahead and lays the groundwork explaining that. And that leads us into the schedule of findings, which starts on page eighty-six. This one is always segregation of duties, just because you don't have enough people in every office to totally segregate all of the transactions and you can't entirely separate, separate the record keeping and the custody of the cash. So
So that's pretty common in all small counties.
It isn't every single audit report.
I've never seen. From any of the boards that I serve on that don't have that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cities also.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Because there's no way that you can ensure that one employee wouldn't handle a transaction from its inception to completion. And it's just the nature of, you know, municipal government in, in the state of Iowa. So again, we, we encourage cross-training of employees. So if somebody's on vacation, somebody else is stepping in. You know, if you can swap duties every couple of months, you know, you've got one person that does payroll, you know, somebody else can do payroll one month of the year. You know, that's great. Same with claims. You know, same with anything, any of the offices.
Cross-training most of your people in your office too.
Yeah, and we found that that's been very important in the last few years with illnesses and, you know, unexpected leaves of absence, that type of thing. But it's pretty crucial to have somebody else know how to do everything within that office. So the office can continue to operate. So the second finding that we have is the preparation of full disclosure financial statements. And because we assist with the GAAP report and also the preparation of the full accrual financial statements, I'm required to put this finding in as well. Again, this is a ninety-eight percent of the audit reports that we issue because we do assist. We don't have a CPA on staff that does all of the financial reporting and they'd have to prepare all the footnote disclosures that go in this book and do the GAAP report and all of, you know, the external financial reporting. So because we assist with that, we're required to disclose it. The third finding that on page eighty-seven is in regards to financial reporting. New this year, the county started receiving that opioid settlement. And so the state auditor's office did provide some documentation as far And so, um, the state auditor's office did provide some documentation as far as how much each county is going to be getting. Um, and then we need to be going ahead and tracking that, so that's something new, I did send Betty a spreadsheet so that she can start tracking that and we'll have a, that'll. Be resolved then for next fiscal year. Uh, we also did have some secondary roads accounts payable that hadn't been properly recorded, we did find that during the course of audit test work. The proposed adjustments were made and all of that was properly included in the financial statements, so that's been resolved this time. Then on page eighty eight, uh, we have the other findings related to statutory reporting. Uh, for the budget, the dispersment exceeded the amounts budgeted at a non-program and the capital budgets function and dispersments in the transportation department exceeded the amounts appropriated, so. Um, you know, just having the departments keep an eye on those expenditures and letting the auditor's office know when they need to make an adjustment, whether it be a budget amendment or. Just the change in appropriation, because those can be done, you know, without having to do, uh, an actual budget amendment, as long as the service area is an increase, you could take from one department and give to another. You know, as long as they're within that same service area. Um, the second one here with questionable expenditures, we did not note any questionable expenditures during the course of our test work now. That doesn't mean there weren't any, it just means that when we selected our dispersments for testing, what we tested, there was appropriate public purpose. Now, with that too, we did go ahead and test the dispersments for the gift cards that are, you know, with the wellness and that type of thing. Because White County has a policy in place to go ahead and do that, and you've acknowledged that there is public purpose for those expenditures. Because of that policy, you know, we still recognize that those could have possibly been questionable expenditures, but we don't have them in the report, they're just in a non-report. Letter that's going to be, you know, coming for Betty, so, um, that way we're disclosing that we did. Recognize these expenditures, however, you've got a policy in place, so we're not putting them in the report.
Gotcha. If the policy wasn't, was there no policy in place, you would be in the audit then?
It would be, it would be, and you know, that has changed over, over the last couple of years, um, you know, our state auditor's office has really. Come down hard on public purpose and making sure that it's appropriate public purpose, there's actual public benefit for the dollars. Um, and it's been pretty black and white, um, what their expectation was and it kind of has taken some of, uh, the control away from the local governments, which. You know, I think public purpose in Des Moines could be different than what public purposes.
Each counties have different needs.
They do, they do, and especially the size of the counties too, you get those smaller counties and you have different public purpose, and so. Um, in order to recognize that, you know, we think that the local board should have control. Over what they feel is appropriate public purpose, um, you know, we've changed our audit reporting policies to reflect that, so that if you do have that policy in place and believe it to be a public. Purpose expenditure, you know, we're still meeting our reporting requirements because we're reporting it as a. What possible questionable, but yet it's not in the audit report.
And that's, that, that's our, well, that saves us how many thousands of dollars on our, our health insurance, so it's just a.
It does.
And I think that we forwarded that question, uh, to the state auditor and they said, hey, you have to have a policy.
Yeah.
If you have a policy in place, then you're covered.
And he says that in his, but then in our training, he tells us that that.
Right, so you have to note it, even though you have a policy.
Yes, yes, but again, you're not gonna see it in the report, you're just gonna see it in the audit communication letter that will go to Betty.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, on page eighty nine, then we have business transactions. The code of Iowa identifies six thousand dollars as the threshold for a potential conflict of interest with related parties. The three that we have listed there are well below that six thousand dollar threshold, so this just becomes a disclosure, there's no finding associated with that. Um, the next finding that we had was in regards to the board minutes, uh, the board went into closed session on the dates listed. And the minutes didn't include the documentation of the roll call vote, and that is something that. Um, in our training, the attorneys that have been providing the open meetings laws, um, have been very sticky about, you know, the code specifically requires that you have to say roll call vote in the minutes. And you have to document out everybody's vote, regardless if it's unanimous or not.
So when we go into closed session, we do roll call?
Yep.
And, and then when we go out of closed session, we do roll call?
Don't have to do it coming out, just have.
Going in roll call, okay, versus normal, okay, good to know.
And this was a finding that we found last year and you can see the dates listed, as soon as Betty knew about it, she corrected it, so Betty and Amanda did, so. You know, as soon as they were aware that that was the requirement, it's already resolved, so not a concern.
Good to know, though.
Um, and then on page, page ninety, we have the last, uh, of the statutory findings, and that is the tax implement finding. Um, and there were payments from the debt service wind farm urban renewal fund and agribusiness urban renewal fund that included payments for fiscal agent fees, which is not allowable. Only debt that has been certified or obligations that, that have been certified as eligible for TIF. Only those obligations can be paid out of the TIF fund, so if you want to. Pay those agent fees with TIF funds, you just have to include them in your certification process.
When you go through the, the, the process, okay, okay.
So when you're doing that certification in December, you just have to include those fees and then.
Then you're fine, then, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
And that gets us to the end of the findings. And as far as non-report things, you know, there were little things that we discussed with the respective departments or elected officials, you know, if we had something that. We found a way, they could do something more efficient or, you know, something maybe that we could do, but there wasn't really anything else. Significant that needed to go in the report or the audit communication letter.
You do a lot of these overall, we do in, compared to other counties, we're.
You're doing well.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Betty and Peggy and.
There's a good staff there.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I deal the most with the auditor's office and the treasurer's office for the financial reporting end of it, but, you know, my staff has had. Nothing but great things to say about all of the elected officials here and everybody's always ready for us, which is really nice, they've got everything ready to rock and roll and. It just makes it a pleasure to come here and do the audits, so.
Good, good.
We've got good people here.
Wonderful.
We do.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have to, uh?
You don't have, there's no, no.
Not a requirement.
And then this will be available up in your office for someone to look at?
Yes, and it's also available on the state auditor's office website, so if anybody's looking for an electronic version of it, they can get in and, um, just pull down their little audit reports dropdown and. It'll be available there as well.
Yeah, I've been some different banks and different, um, S and P reports, I mean, I've been doing it digitally, so.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you keep your book coming up?
I'm gonna keep, I wanna, I wanna.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. I can, yeah.
I had no meetings this last week.
I did not either.
Oh, we did, uh, Sandy and I had a meeting, uh, at the Belmont Hospital with, uh, the. Amy McDaniel's and the nursing staff and also the company that we would like to come in and do home care. Not skilled care, but home care, and I thought that went really, really well, I think it'd be a great mix if I was supposed to, can get the license granted. I think, uh, they will mesh because they will be able to do skilled nursing care, but not home care, this other company does home care, but not skilled care.
And will that cover the entire county or only?
Nope, not the entire county, but it kind of takes care of gaps.
Yep.
Um, and it, it's difficult to differentiate, so White County Public Health has always been. White County Public Health, when they decertified, no longer did home care.
Correct.
So, right now, the, the question or the, what's going to happen or potentially happen is once that certification, which. The hospital started to do prior to, um, COVID.
COVID.
But it got stuck in like a waiver form and they didn't want to view, start it and then not have a grandfather to where they'd have to stop again.
That was their biggest fear, that is just that.
So then, now there is another, um, company who is interested in doing more of. Not the nursing portion of it, but maybe the personal cares and home maker. I can only fill the gap with a little bit on, um, some elderbridge dollars, but they have a need of, you have requirements, it's just a small amount. And that's just home maker only, which would not be personal cares. So with this, there's still companies that come here and provide one here. But this fills, there's a gap or a side that, um, we, it took the process for us in the hospital to identify. Hey, you said there's enough here, there isn't, there's a gap, there's a gap.
Good.
So.
So this should, should fill that, I think, uh, I would say here in the next month, I may have them come in and give a explanation to the board of what their services are. I think it was, I, I was pretty, I was enlightened and.
It'll, it'll be a good, good, um, uh, what do I want to say?
Mesh between the two, huh?
Yeah, kind of a complimentary service to each other.
Yeah.
So how soon will, will the hospital become certified so that this can all?
It's gone all the way to, and now it's sitting at CMS.
It's in Kansas City right there, but we have our contact, so it.
Good, yeah.
So at least it's moving.
It's in the process.
It's in the process, so, so it was my made up, that economic development meeting tomorrow morning at seven.
Yeah.
Other than that.
Wednesday is awards for the.
The charitable foundation.
Five P M. High School Bell in Melon.
Nothing else before the board, motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All on paper? All right, motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.